Welcome to Joplin School Board Meeting on this March 26th of 2013. Roll call.
Mr. Kiprow.
Here.
Mr. Landis.
Present.
Ms. Dicklin.
Here.
Mr. Flowers.
Here.
Mr. Wilcoxson.
Here.
Ms. Sharp.
Present.
And Mr. Steele.
Mr. Steele, sorry.
Here.
Tonight, we're gonna have Jayden Draper come forward and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Come on up, Jayden.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are going to start with district showcase with Irving Elementary, isn't that right, Dr. Besendorf?
That is absolutely correct, President Steele. This evening, we have the distinct honor of having Irving Elementary here, and I think we even have kindergarteners. But before that, I'd like to call up Dr. Debbie Fort, and I think that we would all be remiss if we didn't stop for a moment and to just think about the lives that Debbie Fort has touched as she is retiring after how many years of service with Joplin?
Thirty-three total, twenty-five in Joplin.
So twenty-five years. And Debbie, talk to us about the roles that you've played in Joplin?
Well, gosh, I've been everywhere and done it all, kindergarten, preschool actually through college, and it's just been a wonderful ride. I'm not finished. I hope to still be of use somehow to this district. I love this district. So you're not gonna get rid of me that easy, guys. No worries.
I'm going to her school.
As you can see, I've brought the brightest with me tonight. We have some fifth graders and some kindergarteners here tonight to show you some wonderful things that have been going at Irving. Irving was so blessed after the tornado that we made a goal that this was our year to give back. Our kids came up with all kinds of creative things. We had the couch club where we found coins in our couch and gave money to people, and we supported a school, several schools. But these boys came to me in January and wanted to plant a garden, in January. This is their story.
We went to Dr. Fort's office, and we decided that since so many people had helped Irving, that we should help Irving too. We decided to make a school garden, and a man named Randy Brandom helped us out with a lot of ideas on the garden and showed us a lot of ways.
Remember, you're on jet fourteen, so we need to make sure we're here. It's on.
You guys are good then.
We went to Dr. Fort's office. And we went to Dr. Fort's office in January, and since so many people had wanted, had helped Irving, we wanted to help Irving too. And we decided that we wanted to do a school garden, so a man named Randy Brandom gave us a lot of ideas on it and helped us out with a lot of our stuff.
I'm Ludacai Hunt, and what we, what Mr. Brandom taught us was that when you plant your seeds, you need to have them facing a south window, and you need to use warm water because when plants absorb heat, it helps germinate. And what germinating is, when it sprouts. So he taught us that you need to use warm water, and it needs to face south window because the sun goes from east to west, and that's how you get the most sunlight. That's all I got.
He also showed us that, I'm Jordan Stevens, and he also taught us that when you grow a tomato plant, you need to tie a stake to it to help it stand up, and if you remove the sucker leaves, you can replant them to grow another tomato plant.
My name is Jayden Draper, and I would like to take this time to thank all the people that have helped us to make in this garden, our wonderful principal, Dr. Fort, Randy Brandom, and our wonderful teacher, Mrs. Few.
And so Randy gave them several plants. What kind of plants have you guys been growing?
He gave us sweet peppers, tomatoes, lettuce, and cucumbers.
And what else did he provide?
I told him lettuce.
And he gave us a little mini greenhouse.
And he even gave us a starter kit with, so we could get our plants started. And we were kind of confused at first because there was these little two pot soil things, and there were four cups. And then, once you pour water onto them, they expand up. So we soon figured out that we had to cut them in half and put them into the two cups. And we made the mistake of letting Alex take them home.
Over spring break, someone needs to water them.
I have a brown thumb. And one lettuce plant is now living right now.
But they have done a remarkable job, and it's been real life learning. And I asked them today, what did you learn from all this? And they said they learned gardening is easier than they thought, and it was really cool to grow their own. So they have brought some things that they've been growing for you. Oh, they also, you know, it's cross-curricular, they wrote a song, and I believe they want to perform it. Boys don't.
We are plants delicious, but we're stronger than others. We are planting seeds, even though we're eating beans. We learned that they need to face a south window because it gives them the most sunlight. And I'd like to say goodbye.
While they're giving you your cherry tomato plants, up front, we have kindergarteners coming in. Our two kindergarten teachers went to a workshop on writing, and that's one of our district focuses. And so they came back with these wonderful ideas about getting kindergarteners to write. And we want to show you the books, not the stories, not the one sentence or two sentences, the stories these children are reading.
As they're handing out the plants, I got a question for you guys. How many of you want to grow up to be a farmer?
One.
One? Well, that's pretty good odds.
So I think, President Steele, I think Steele, it's safe to announce that these gentlemen are gonna make sure we have more vegetables on the trays of all students across the district. Is that right, fresh vegetables for everybody?
Their goal is to provide a big salad for all Irving kids. Before this school year is out, we'll have a homemade salad.
Oh, cool.
Yes.
Good job, once again, good job. Thanks, we appreciate it, guys.
So this is Mrs. Moore and Mrs. Mashert and some of our Irving kindergarten students, and they've got books here they just want to show you that they've written. You guys want to tell a little bit about the workshop that you went to?
We were lucky enough to get to go to a workshop back in November, and when we came back, it was all about the littlest kids can write books. And so we came back, we had always had our kids write in journals or write in a paper, and we thought, you know what, they can do it, we know they can. So we gave them books. And we are getting books from these kids, two, three, four, and five sentences. And we've done narratives, we have done informational texts, and so some of them have informational texts and have narratives to share with you guys tonight, but we are really proud of them. We know you guys will be too.
You guys just bring out these guys at the table. You guys just come down here, come down here and show me. Because it is awesome. Is your mom and dad here? Should you wave to them? You see them? Wave to them. There you go. Now read it to me. What are we doing here? Is this your name? Okay. What's this, giraffes? Giraffes eat bananas? Giraffes eat leaves? Now that is an awesome story. Can I have five? Good deal. I am so proud of you. Can I take your picture with your voice? Okay. Zoom back. Eyes. Awesome. I love it. Want to share with Mr. Flowers? Okay. Or Mr. Steele? Are you sure you're gonna be with me?
You're a boy, you're a lead guy.
You're a dog like that. Let me see it. Tell me your story.
Smile for a picture.
Is that what you're doing?
Good job. You did a good job there.
Okay. Cheers. Is that your name? Is that your name? Is that your name? Can you wave to them? Do they see you? Way up high.
What's she, what's her story?
You don't know where they are? Are you somewhere? Did you see them? I don't know where they are. Okay. Story, may I take some pictures? It's not. Can I have your picture? Yes. You sure you're gonna be with me?
You're a kitty ear. Good job.
You're a boy, you're a lead guy. You're a dog like that. Let me see it. Tell me your story.
Smile for a picture.
Is that what you're doing?
Good job. You did a good job there.
Okay. Cheers. Is that your name? Is that your name? Is that your name? Can you wave to them? Do they see you? Way up high.
What's she, what's her story?
You don't know where they are? Are you somewhere? Did you see them? I don't know where they are. Okay. Story, may I take some pictures? It's not. Can I have your picture? Yes. You're a boy, you're a lead guy. You're a dog like that. Let me see it. Tell me your story. Okay. Now we have to sit side by side so I can see the pictures, alright? Alright, here we go. Horses! I love horses. Okay. Maybe you can have a picture. People ride horses? I like it. Can I take a picture with your book?
I need some cool air.
Ready? One, two, three. That's cute.
My daughter's taking care of that. Air. Cool air.
Mr. Steele.
Yes?
Irving just wants to say thank you to the board and the leadership team for everything you do for our children.
Well, thank you for the leadership of Irving. Thank you. Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Do I hear approval over the consent agenda?
So moved.
Go ahead. Hold on, just a second.
I need to make some changes.
Jeff's gonna make some changes.
I'd like to remove items two, three.
Microphone.
Sorry. I'd like to remove items two, three, four, and five, and then add item one on the supplement to, for the more net internet usage fee bandwidth.
President Steele, can we also take off the cap out lace so we'll be able to discuss it?
And that's number fourteen?
Yes.
So the motion is to remove two, three, four, five, and fourteen.
And add.
And add number one from your supplement.
Right.
To the consent agenda. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion's been made by Annie and seconded by, I mean, motion's been made by Jeff, seconded by Annie. Any more discussion? Please vote.
Yes.
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 And yes. Starting with our reports, superintendent reports, Dr. Huff.
Well, we've got a lot of stuff going on construction-wise tonight. I think we have some folks here, I know, I saw Mike, and it's hard to tell in the crowd who all we've got here on construction that day.
They're out there.
Yeah, our turn to Archie.
Got a lot of good things going on construction-wise. We're seeing a lot of things start coming out, happen at high school, things come up out of the ground, so these guys are gonna give us the lowdown on where things are with construction tonight.
Here's another chair. We have one, Archie.
I was up bright and early for that Steele to come on.
Were you there?
She wasn't.
She wasn't there, would mean you were there.
No.
I was up bright and early.
You was not there at the time we were there.
I was texting you when I was there. When I was texting.
Go ahead, Archie. We're discussing who was up at that early morning at high school.
Sure. Well, thank you very much. Got both of our lead project managers with me this evening, and I'll give you, I guess, a brief summary at the end over kind of where we're at with bidding projects and, you know, and what remains on bidding, but I guess first, Jason, if you want to give an update on where we're at on Irving and East.
Alright, starting with Irving. If you've driven by the site recently, you can see we've got all the steel up now. We're setting all the joists, or actually, all the joists are set with exception to a block area that we had to hold out due to the weather that hit last week. So depending weather, we're trying to get them started back this week. We'll complete that, the rest of the load-bearing block in about a week's time, and then we'll be able to finish out the last of the joists that we have. They're starting on decking. In the next two weeks, I would see us being decked out with all the steel. The roof is, material's delivered, they're getting started on the roofing for the two-story second through fifth grade classrooms right now, and they'll be able to continue right, moving through the building into the area B and then area A for roofing. So from a scheduling standpoint, steel completing in a couple of weeks, the stud framing is gonna get started, and we're gonna start enclosing the whole building, so things are coming together good. We'll start seeing the exterior finishes, the brick, it's all been selected, and the mock-ups are in process right now, but they're gonna start on the weather barrier here in another week, and then we'll start the brick veneer on the two-story classroom portion following next week. So we'll start seeing what the actual finishes are gonna look like real soon. Any questions on Irving? On the middle school and elementary number two, a lot more, a lot bigger project over there. You can start to see the middle school portion of it right now, the north, or I guess I should say, the west side of the project is all shelled in. I say all shelled in, we're still tying in the steel between the common space which separates the auditorium and the big gym. We've got the steel joists set right now, they've got some detailing to do. We were chasing the masons out of the building, and the sequence was working really well. With the weather that hit, it kind of stopped our load-bearing masonry. We only have about four days left to finish that, and we were kind of chasing it with the steel. Well, it didn't stop the steel, so they kind of caught up just a little bit, but we've got some detailing to do to let the masons finish with the block. We're in really good shape, really, really, a good update as far as the middle school's tracking right now. As far as the elementary school goes, we're set to hit and start that. We were tracking, following the first week of April. We're pushing to start delivering material next week, so it's about a week ahead on material delivery, and if we can start erecting that next week, we would like to. I still plan on that being the following week, but if we can push them a little harder and start setting some steel, we'll do that. And good things, good things are happening as far as shelling in the building. We've got the roofers on site right now. That was our big milestone, drying in the building. So with them continuing on the two-story, they're starting on the end of the building, and they're just gonna work their way all the way out the elementary side. So we've got a lot of space turned over to them right now, and they've got a big crew getting started. So really optimistic about the roofing and drying in the space. Interior stud framing is taking place, and I'd like to get some exterior studs up, which are taking place now. You can start to see the sheathing going, and our goal will be to start the veneer over there kind of the same time we're starting the veneer at Irving. So in a couple of weeks, we would like to try to push to start that coming around the backside, and here pretty quick, we'll start working hard on finishing the site, getting the drives in, starting to get the asphalt and stuff going. What Archie was talking about, some things we have yet to bid, we're gonna be getting on the street. So as far as progress goes, we're in really good shape on both Irving and East Middle School Elementary Two, so. Any questions there? I know there's a lot you can see going on right now, so in another month, the next time we meet, you should see all of the building. We'll see the steel setting in place on the elementary side, you'll see what the building's gonna look like, and we should be about to the end of finishing steel, which sets our next milestone to doing the roofing for the whole building. So tracking really good. Any additional questions?
It looks awesome.
It's great.
Everything's still on schedule, everything on those.
It's great, great. Yep. Weather, I mean, we've had very little of it, and we're set to push ahead, so we're in good shape.
Good.
Well, the high school, not as much going on, but we're finally coming out of the ground. There's always a lot of activities to get us to that point, but now you can see the steel starting to come out of the ground, so that's nice. And to finally have the folks be able to go by and see some actual progress, which you can't see it underneath the ground, but it happened. Every sap has, continues to spread top soil on the site and working on the retaining walls at the baseball field as well as the drainage channel. The, continue to haul off excess soil, which was about to be named Mount Joplin over there because it was, it came to be a pretty big pile, but they've almost got that whittled away and probably expect that to be gone the next three weeks, we would anticipate. Branco continues to work on footings and piers, and we expect that the area D structural steel, first through third levels be completed here in the beginning of next week, and we anticipate the next area, area E steel to be delivered next Tuesday, and they'll continue with that. They seem to be working really well and meeting our dates that we've established at this point.
One, I guess, one thing that I'll add as it relates to schedule, I know we've talked about it at past meetings, is we do continue to, you know, run into some challenges with the site, and we're working closely with the design team and the various engineers on the project to come up with solutions to maintain schedule. We have talked with the steel erector and had them adjust the delivery sequence for structural steel for areas D through F, which is the steel that you see coming up now, as well as just recently, because of some hurdles that we're gonna encounter probably over in the B C area. We've talked to them about restructuring their steel, so once upon a time, we were talking about coming up kind of out of the ground, the full wings from east to west, all the way up. They're delivering to us the east half of the steel for each of those, each of those wings first, and we'll take those all the way from ground up to the structure while we resolve soil issues on the backside or the west side, and then we'll fall back and come up with structural steel on the west. And it hasn't cost us really any time yet to date. We're just continuing to play the hopscotch game best we can to try to maintain schedule, and we'll keep you posted as we move forward on that. Other key piece of information to share with you on the high school, as many of you know, we did bid twenty-one more scopes since the last time we met on the high school. We had good interest from the bidders, and I think we had pretty favorable bid results. We did just bid it last week, so we're still, we're still meeting with contractors and making sure that we've got a meeting of the minds on the scope is what we intended on the packages. We do only have a few packages in front of you this evening for approval, and those are our critical path contractors that we really need to keep, or we need approval on so that we can keep on schedule. The balance of those twenty-one packages, we should have before you next month, as well as kind of an updated schedule. As, if you recall, one of the other things that we asked for from all the contractors is specific critical path durations for all of their activities, and we're in the process of plugging all of that into our master schedule so that we can get a better feel from where, you know, our project team is now that we know, or we're gonna know very shortly, who the rest of our team is and what their capabilities are to, you know, to bring this project home. At, I guess, at this point, at the high school, all that remains to bid is we still need to bid the athletic fields, the landscaping, the asphalt work, and the polished concrete. As Jason mentioned, over the next month, we're gonna bid out the rest of the packages for East Middle School, so it'll be landscaping, asphalt, terrazzo, treads, and some metal railings, and we expect to have those before you at next month's board meeting for approval, and that'll close out the bidding process for East. We also expect to have the flooring package, which we're putting back out on the street after working with the design team for some V E suggestions, and we're putting that out on the street probably first of next week, and hopefully we'll have bid results to share with you on Irving for that as well.
Sounds good. Any questions for these guys?
What is the, coming up out of ground? I mean, you say that's what wing, what is?
That is, that is area D.
Which is?
We call it our, the bio-science wing.
Okay, thank you.
And that's, that's kind of the center of the building. If you recall, we're kind of working from the center and working our way out. We will, the next deal that'll show up will be, I guess, immediately to the north of the steel that you see coming up, and we'll work towards the central plant. Then the next big shipment of steel for B and C is probably gonna be about mid-May.
So that's the bio-science?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You got some pictures, I understand.
Yeah. Well, I might add one other thing, just as a note for parents and everybody going down Twentieth. On East Middle School, the Twentieth Street, we've got a big box culvert that crosses that whole road, so that road is gonna be closed. I think we've got it scheduled for April eighth, and there's notices and flyers going out to everybody, so people traveling the Twentieth Street, there'll be a temporary closure of that, and I think it's scheduled for two weeks. I don't think it'll take that long, but it's kind of gonna be weather-dependent, so we've got some big work crossing that.
Thank you for letting us know.
You bet.
Ready for the pictures?
Sure.
we did bid 21 more scopes since the last time we met on the high school. We had good interest from the bidders, and I think we had pretty favorable bid results. We did just bid it last week, so we're still meeting with contractors and making sure that we've got a meeting of the minds on the scope is what we intended on the packages. We do only have a few packages in front of you this evening for approval, and those are our critical path contractors that we really need to keep or we need approval on so that we can keep on schedule. The balance of those 21 packages, we should have before you next month, as well as kind of an updated schedule. As if you recall, one of the other things that we asked for from all the contractors is specific critical path durations for all of their activities, and we're in the process of plugging all of that into our master schedule so that we can get a better feel from where, you know, our project team is now that we know, or we're going to know very shortly, who the rest of our team is and what their capabilities are to, you know, to bring this project home. At, I guess, at this point, at the high school, all that remains to bid is we still need to bid the athletic fields, the landscaping, the asphalt work, and the polished concrete. As Jason mentioned, over the next month, we're going to bid out the rest of the packages for East Middle School. So it'll be landscaping, asphalt, terrazzo, treads, and some metal railings, and we expect to have those before you at next month's board meeting for approval, and that'll close out the bidding process for East. We also expect to have the flooring package, which we're putting back out on the street after working with the design team for some V.E. suggestions, and we're putting that out on the street probably first of next week, and hopefully we'll have bid results to share with you on Irving for that as well.
Sounds good. Any questions for these guys?
What is the coming up out of ground? I mean, you say that's what wing it, what is?
That is Area D. We call it the Bioscience wing, and that's kind of the center of the building. If you recall, we're kind of working from the center and working our way out. We will, the next deal that'll show up will be, I guess, immediately to the north of the steel that you see coming up, and we'll work towards the central plant. Then the next big shipment of steel for B and C is probably going to be about mid-May.
So that's the Bioscience?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You've got some pictures, I understand.
Yeah. Well, I might add one other thing, just as a note for parents and everybody going down 20th. On East Middle School, the 20th Street, we've got a big box culvert that crosses that whole road, so that road is going to be closed. I think we've got it scheduled for April 8th, and there's notices and flyers going out to everybody, so people traveling the 20th Street, there'll be a temporary closure of that, and I think it's scheduled for two weeks. I don't think it'll take that long, but it's kind of going to be weather depending. So we've got some big work crossing that.
Thank you for letting us know.
You bet.
Ready for the pictures?
Sure.
I'm sure the warm weather will be nice for those workers out there here shortly.
Absolutely.
Thank you, guys. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's exciting.
Common Core standards.
Yeah, we had an update to the board in work session, but we've asked Sam to come back up again and provide a brief review of the Common Core, and there's a lot of talk out there about that. We're going to hear more about that in coming months and in the coming years, and Sam's going to give a quick overview to the community as to what the Common Core is all about.
Good evening, Mr. Superintendent, members of the board. Dr. Besendorf and members of the community. My name is Sam Howe, and I'm with Scholastic Publishers. I'm here to talk to you a little bit about Common Core and what's coming. And the reason that I'm talking to you about this topic is I want you to understand that the state test that you're used to will change in the next couple of years in every state that has adopted the Common Core standards. The Common Core standards are an initiative led by the Council of Chief State School Officers, and the states have formed two basic consortiums. The goal is to develop standardized educational standards in reading and mathematics primarily that will help ensure that all children are college and career-ready by the time they exit from high school. These standards are more than being able to recite facts. They actually push students to be able to apply their knowledge to complex, real-world problems, so I want you to realize that's happening. And why I'm telling that to you is that I want you to get a feeling for what Common Core means in the reading front primarily, but understand that it's similar in mathematics. So this is data collected in the 2005-2006 time period, and what it shows is reading level on a Lexile scale. Down here is about 600 Lexiles up to about 1,600. The Lexile scale runs from zero to about 1,600, and roughly the 1,200 to 1,300 range is about where you need to be at the end of high school. So this shows the reading level of textbooks in high school literature, college literature, high school sciences outside of literature such as science, social studies, mathematics, college textbooks outside of literature, reading level required to have a successful placement on the Armed Forces entry exams, students who we would wish be able to support themselves as independent readers, those that go for entry-level job occupations, and then the A.C.T. and S.A.T. schools. One more click, please. And so what it shows you is that college and career readiness is really at the 1,200-plus Lexiles. Now, for those of you who are not into Lexiles, translation is very simple. By the time you exit from high school, you need to be reading on grade level. And what I want you to understand is that if you flip to the next slide, the only test in the country that measures reading on grade level right now is the National Assessment of Educational Progress, NAPPE. And proficiency on NAPPE, this is fourth-grade data, specifically reading on grade level. The relative rigor of each test in the country, state test, is shown on this chart, with Missouri one of the highest at grade four and similarly at grade eight. The next line, please, is the highest. But what I want you to point out is while Missouri is very high, it's not quite as rigorous as proficiency on NAPPE. Translation, meaning. What this means is that in a couple of years' time, when a Common Core test comes out that's designed to measure if children are career and college-ready by the time they exit high school, in all likelihood, test scores will drop. They will drop a little bit in Missouri, much more in Virginia, farther still in Maryland and where I live right now, Georgia, they're going to drop massively. So I want you to understand that this is coming and be prepared for it in your thinking. Next slide, please. So this is a comparison of the rigor of state tests in 2011 in reading, and we'll look at grade four. The red bar says that all the students tested on the Missouri MAP test, Communications Art, scored about 52.7% proficient and above. NAPPE test did not test all the same students that the Missouri state test. They tested a sample scientifically designed to match the state test, and they showed that 34% of the students, about a third of the students, were proficient and advanced. Okay, what does this mean? It means that in a couple of years' time, if the test is as rigorous as NAPPE, you should plan for a 17% to 18% drop in reading scores under a new test. So the reason I'm here to talk to you is that Scholastic's been working with the district on a partnership to raise reading scores for the last couple of years. You've been working very hard at it, and you've had some very strong results. We want you to know that while those results are good, because the test is becoming more rigorous over time, there will probably be a need for more students to go into reading intervention and also similarly in mathematics. I'm not going to show you the next slide. I'm going to stop here just so I don't inundate you with numbers. But basically, what this 10 to 20-point drop in scores will mean is probably another 400 to 800 students in the district in need of intervention. And what I want you to think about as academic leaders, as a board and community, is how do we prepare for this change that is coming? How do we prepare teachers for the increase in rigor that's coming with the new test? The ability to apply reasoning skills in complex, real-world problems? How do we prepare families and parents for the fact that there will be additional students? Some of our children will now need intervention treatment services, and all of this stuff will represent some level of additional incremental investment or shifting of current investments to be able to accommodate these educational requirements. I want you to think about it. I want you to decide how you're preparing for it, and know that this is coming. It's coming here, it's coming in virtually every state in the country as we seek to raise the rigor to make sure that children are fully prepared to be career and college-ready by the time they exit high school. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Board President Report. Well, first thing, this is our board meeting for April 16th, but I think there's a conflict for about five of us. Because me and you won't be here.
No, it's true.
Well, yeah, we won't be here. Jeff won't be here. Annie won't be here, so we're going to have to reschedule April 16th board meeting. So we'll get some new dates out. How's that? MSBA Spring Regional Conference is April 23rd in Aurora, so if you haven't got your reservation in, you need it pretty quick, don't you? Put me down. So if I haven't told you. And next, I guess we had two board members go on a trip recently, plus Dr. Besendorf up here, to the UAE trip. You want to discuss that one evening or both evenings?
We're not going to go into too much detail tonight. We're putting together a presentation for the future, but it was an amazing experience for the district to go and experience their culture, Annie Mae and Angie and Terry Hart.
Oh, yeah, Terry went.
And Kim.
And Kim, oh, that's right.
Man. So it was an amazing trip with the city, the chamber, nursery, hospital, and Joplin Schools.
Cool. So we'll look for more.
Look for more.
Okay. This time, we'll move on to public comments regarding agenda items. As a board, we appreciate hearing from our patrons regarding their thoughts on the agenda items that are presented this evening at this board meeting. You can rest assured that your thoughts will be taken into account as we make decisions impacting the children of Joplin Schools. As I call your name, please come forward and state your name, and you will have three minutes to address the board. Our timekeeper tonight is our school lawyer, John Nicholas, so he will keep track of our time. Is that right, John?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We're going to start this evening with Marcia Long.
Good evening. My name's Marcia Long, and my concerns tonight are regarding the redistricting. My concerns really don't have so much to do with what you vote on tonight, but actually more so with the way that it's come about. I do know some strange things in the plan that I've seen. For example, the kids that live at Eighth and Pennsylvania will now be bused out to South Middle School, and the kids that live out in Summit Ridge area and south, south, south of 32nd Street pretty far will now be bused to North Middle School, and I'm sure you've had a good explanation for that, but it doesn't make sense to me. The plan that was put together really only had the administration and a select few people who were apparently chosen by the administration. Early on, there was no grassroots involvement from a wider population of patrons and before the ink was even dry on the plan, and it really sounds to me like you've had more input from the district and patrons, kids, lots of people on this new name that you're voting on tonight than you've had on this highly important issue. Reports in the Joplin Globe, I love to read the Joplin Globe, seem to contradict what is actually being done here tonight. On March the 13th, your administrator in charge of the project was quoted, saying his committee was aware of the objections and are looking for new thoughts and approaches. And after the informational meeting at Cecil Floyd, a Fox News report on my television showed our board president saying, "We want to hear those concerns," and maybe a different idea, maybe something different to bring to the table so we can address this issue. And then our superintendent was quoted on March the 7th in the Globe, saying, "The district felt they have a good plan, but they would look at other ideas." So now comes a group of thoughtful, polite, well-educated, civic-minded patrons, the kind of people that most districts would be welcoming and appreciating, but these people, I'm not so sure that was the case. Well, they put together a plan that met your objectives, plus eliminated some of the trailers at the elementary schools, which has been a goal that your board stated in the past, but that wasn't on your list of objectives. So they were finally, after some consideration, allowed to present their plan to your hand-selected committee. The next morning in the Joplin Globe, it was reported that a member of the redistrict committee said that they had to be careful about appearing to cater to special interest groups. And I ask you, what makes this group a special interest group? The Globe also reported another member of the committee said that opening this procedure to the public would invite chaos. Now, if our district is teaching our kids that opening discussion to the public on highly important and controversial issues, if we're teaching them that this should be discouraged because we might have differing opinions, I'm really disappointed about that. So after we have all this talk of public input, parallel involvement, that's what you as a board and your administration has said you wanted. The plan you are seemingly about to approve tonight is the very same one with maybe a smidgen of differences, very little difference. It's almost exactly the same that you were voting on four weeks ago when you tabled.
That's your time, man.
Could I have permission to finish? I have one more paragraph.
There's a...
The board policies for three minutes.
I think there's 11 more people to discuss, so thank you.
Okay, well, I will close by saying that I respectfully suggest to you that the way you handle this does not meet the specific goals that you've set, and in the future, I do hope you will try harder to meet the goals that you have set as a board.
Thank you, Marcia. Next is Patrick Martucci.
Patrick Martucci. Last December, the administration selected a committee to make recommendations about a redistricting plan. Before that plan could even be presented to the board for consideration, letters went out to the parents telling them the plan had already been adopted and to which schools their child would be sent. That plan, adopted in closed meetings without notice to the parents, was a process of exclusion. At the last board meeting, parents expressed disapproval of that closed process and expressed disagreement with redistricting and whether it was premature. The board agreed, and they tabled the vote on that. Those same parents went to the administration, and they asked for answers to questions, important questions such as, "Will we be doing this again in two to three years? What is the great urgency when Joplin is still rebuilding and neighborhoods are still recovering? Will there be grandfathering allowed, and at what grade levels?" These questions and many more the administration could not answer. And with so many unanswered questions, I ask this: Is this truly in the best interests of the students? Because if we cannot say that it is, what is the good reason to do this right now? Redistricting involves much more than shifting student numbers and balancing free and reduced lunches. It affects the students personally. It affects family expectations, relationships with the school. I got involved in Scenario 9 because I thought a greater purpose could be accomplished than simply shifting student numbers. So while Scenario 9 does all that, it also seeks to accomplish more good by eliminating trailers at Jefferson Elementary, which the administration plan simply overlooked. We created Scenario 9 not because we thought our plan would in the end be the best plan that could be created. We created it as an example as to the degree of good that could be accomplished by allowing more time and consideration for other ideas. Now, some have attempted to disparage our efforts, mischaracterizing us as parents from the South who are reluctant to send our children to North Middle School in a lower-income neighborhood. I ask those people to remember this: Many parents here tonight choose to send our children to Cecil Floyd, which is the most diverse school in the district. Children of all races, socioeconomic groups, physical and mental abilities are educated harmoniously at that school, and we are proud of that because our children learn understanding. They learn acceptance, they learn tolerance, and they learn compassion. To say those same parents who embrace that degree of diversity are concerned about a middle school in a lower-income neighborhood is simply narrow-minded. The district relies on parents for so many things, such as fundraisers, participation in tutoring, and organizing class parties, et cetera. I've always thought whether parents would be able to rely on the district to participate and to give input when something as important as redistricting came about. And I look to your vote tonight to answer that question for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. Jennifer Martucci.
Jennifer Martucci. At the February meeting where the board voted to table the issue of redistricting for a month in order to get more community input, Ms. Sharp, you asked how we would be in any different position a month later by doing this. The truth is, we aren't in any different place because the minute we disagreed with the administration's proposal, that door was slammed in our face. It seems odd that an administration who could in three months' time, after a terrible, devastating disaster, transform an empty store space at a mall into a makeshift high school and get our kids back to school on time, could not figure out how to organize focus groups to gain public insight into an issue that affects so many children. When we left that meeting, we asked when we would be able to participate in these groups. The answer was that they would let us know. We asked if we could attend the committee meeting, and the answer was no. Then the answer was yes, but no one could speak to anybody. We decided at that point that we needed to organize and have some parent groups of our own to try to come up with an alternative plan. We reached out to our PTA and asked for their help in simply getting a meeting notice out to other school principals and PTAs to let their parents know that they could get involved. We were, again, told no. We asked if we could elect another member representative from our school, when our representative stated in the newspaper that they felt they weren't affected and we just needed to deal with it. We were told no. We were allowed to present our Scenario 9 to the committee, where later a member of that committee told me that I had made a great presentation, but I went into the cards stacked against me. I asked to present our proposal to the board in the work session previous to this and was told no, but the district representative was allowed to put his own spin on it for your answers. People have said that we're a special interest group that should not be catered to. If caring about the kids in this school district and expecting the system to work on their behalf makes us a special interest group, then I believe that should be one that's listened to. The chairman of the committee stated that change is in the air, but what I ask you is, are we making change for the sake of change, or are we making change for the sake of improving something? What does the district's proposal, current plan, actually improve except the free and reduced... reduced lunch numbers? How is any child better academically for this plan? Through this entire process, I have been mad and sad, I've been hopeful, I've been frustrated, but at this point, I am simply disappointed. Disappointed in a flawed system that should hold themselves to a higher standard. Along with that storm came so much opportunity, opportunity that you are missing out on if you vote to adopt the district's proposed plan tonight without any further discussion and don't take the time to truly think it through. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Dr. Jeff Manley.
Good evening. Jeff Manley. During the board meeting, February 26, 2013, just last month, the board unanimously decided to table the vote for the current redistricting plan until the night's meeting. Since that time, special interest group, if you won't call us, for multiple elementary school districts have met and discussed our proposal and raised several valid concerns and that's been presented to you. We were given about four weeks to come up with an alternative plan to see if we could do better than the one that you were presenting. And our goal here was not to come up with a better plan. Our goal here was to come up with another plan to show you that taking a little bit of time, getting community involvement, you can come up with something better than what you offer. But first, really, I want to talk about the original committee. The parent representative handpicked by the principal to sit on the redistricting committee seems more than a token gesture, meaning no disrespect, most parents were never even aware of this process was going on. So how can the administration possibly expect this one person, one person, to speak for an entire parent population? That's unfair. It's overwhelming. These parent representatives were given no other options to choose from. They were not given an opportunity to change the plan and no other members of the community were in the board. It appears that the district was denied a technology grant just recently in December of 2012 and this was due in part to scoring a zero out of five regarding a lack of transparency with school staff and the public. This current proposal is another example of the Joplin R8 administration including the community from involvement in the public school district. We can talk about redistricting committee priorities and we know what those priorities were. Our priorities were the same. During this last month, an alternative redistricting plan was created for the administration's consideration. The plan not only accomplishes your current objectives, but also places some priority over neighborhoods over feeder schools, balances out the elementary school numbers, which in turn balance out the middle school numbers. We also addressed ongoing concerns at trailers at elementary campuses due to overcrowding and growth, which the current administration plan is not. We looked at a few key elements when we made up our plan and again, I stress this does not say our plan is better, it's to say that we can do better as a whole. We utilized the exact same criteria and the data the administration used in creating their plan. We created a plan that made the fewest assumptions possible, geographic population growth, in order to revisit this in three to five years. We eliminated as many temporary buildings as possible. Special consideration was given to ideal class sizes, growth rates, and individual school alternataries. That was fast.
I'm sorry, I'm answering.
Wow. Every one of our students deserved our best effort. And if you're okay with being average, then you should vote for your proposal. But if you think we can do better, you should vote no.
Thank you, Mr. Manley. Greg Bowman.
Hello. My name's Greg Bowman. First, I'd like to say thank you for hearing us out tonight. I'd like to thank a couple of the board members for seeing us personally on the side. My feelings tonight are, tonight we have an opportunity in front of us to lead by example, to show the students and the community that the most important thing is to get it right, not to get it done. I, like you, have studied both proposals and multiple others and what I've learned is there are great points in both proposals. There are also correctable flaws in both proposals. And the good news is, is that tonight, you don't have to choose between the lesser of two evils. You have to decide whether or not the plans before you can be improved at all, if this is as good as it can possibly get. Now, the administration's been quoted in the papers saying that this can be wiped, this can wait till next year. What I'm here to ask you is to grant that. Let us be a part of the process. During that time, we should conduct focus groups, town hall meetings, and get true input, input that impacts the end result, not more PowerPoints that says, "This is what we're going to do and this is why we're going to do it." Now, I realize this isn't easy. I work with my dad and my brother every day and lord knows, there's days I wish I could just say, "Let's just do this." But every time, we come to a better decision when you get more input and more involvement. Now, when I studied the plans, I didn't just study the plans, I studied the district. And I was shocked to learn that we have gone since 2007, from the 76th percentile in the state scores, to our current position of 11.9. And that's dramatic. To me, it's dramatic. It's going to take everybody in this room, the administration, down to parents and students and everything, to reverse that trend. The good news is, you guys can take the first step, take that first bold step by showing that it's important to get it done correctly. Everyone in this room's had somebody in their lives, a coach, a teacher, somebody, that said, "That's a good job, but you can do better." God knows, I was on the receiving end of those in my fair share of parent-teacher conferences, I know. And, but if I look back and I'm honest with myself, they were right. And that's what I'm here to say to you. I don't believe the plan that's in front of you tonight is as good as we can do. Joplin can do better than this. And I ask that you give us that time to come up with that. How can we ask our students to strive for excellence if that doesn't start in this room tonight? Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Sheena Briggs.
I'm Sheena Briggs and I was one of the parents involved in the committee. And I want to say that I don't think that belittling that committee by saying that it should not have been people that work in those schools every day, the administration, they know, who knows better than the people that work there that are with those kids every day? And you can't invite 20 or 30 parents from every school to be involved in something this big. You will never get anything accomplished. Your goal will never be met. There's too many emotions, there's too many ideas, and I think that the proposal that the committee came up with addresses every concern from every school and they were all represented there, they all had their voices heard. And personally, I would, my opinion is, through my principle, I have the utmost respect for her and I would guarantee that what she thinks is what is the best for my child. I can't speak for everybody at every school, but I mean, I would think that if you're going to hire someone, that you should have, you know, that they're responsible for your kids, so they would know what's best. The issue with the trailers at Jefferson, I think it's a commendable idea to get rid of all the trailers at the school with the fact is that the schools do not have the size, are not built for the size that they have, the population of kids that they have now. If you get rid of those, you have to get rid of teachers, you have to get rid of classrooms. Where are those kids going to go? They can't go in closets in the school. I mean, I don't want my kids to be in a trailer at the school, but that's just the nature of, you know, they're older schools. You can't add more students without adding more room. I heard that, you know, the administration, the Board of Education didn't involve the community at all. I don't think that's correct. Districts all over make these decisions yearly without the input of their community. I think you guys have gone above and beyond to hear everybody's concerns and it's been said previously that the board was elected to represent us. I have the utmost respect for all of you. I think that you guys do an amazing job and I think that you represent the community as a whole. You guys, you know, this redistricting is supposed to impact the entire district, our students, and be, you know, for the better, not for what's good for this one spot in the town and what's good for, you know, the other spot in the town. The other concern was that the kids are stressed. I think that lies on the parents. They're stressed because there's no decision made. I think that there should be a concise decision made tonight and move forward because they all, the parents and the students, they don't really care where they're going, they just want to know where they're going next year. And I think six months' time over the summer is enough time to adjust to that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Sheena. Melinda Gibson.
Good evening. My name is Melinda Gibson and I have a first grader that attends Royal Heights Elementary. I come here tonight for one purpose and one purpose only. I come here because it's my duty as a parent and as a member of the community of Joplin to come as a reminder of what it means to be community. Joplin is a community and every person has value and worth and every person can contribute to the common good. Part of being in a community is doing what is best for the common good and not putting like a selfish personal interest or one small percentage of people above everyone else. I believe that this time is when we as parents and community members need to take a step back and reexamine the motivation of tonight's topic. My husband and I bought a house in the Royal Heights area because it is a diverse community. We want our son to have a life experience of being in economically diverse community. We can't afford to send him to private school, but we choose not to. We choose to put him in the Joplin School District. We do this for several reasons. It would be a disservice to him to isolate him from a diverse community because he would lose the opportunity to gain the knowledge that comes by being in a diverse environment. Four years ago, when we bought our house, we knew our son would be going to North Middle School. Then the tornado happened. Again, something we can't change, we just have to go with it and adapt. Now with the redistricting, he will be moved to East Middle School and our school will lose a neighborhood of kids to another elementary school. What does this change for our family? A little more travel time when we drop him off to middle school, saying goodbye to friends if they choose to switch schools, and a different school that I'll volunteer in when he's in middle school. Life or school is what you make of it. My husband and I both work, yet we find time to be involved in the school. Is going to East Middle School what we planned for our son's future? No, it wasn't. But we trust our elected board members to make a decision based on what is best for the whole school district and we support them with that decision. We will adapt and change and make whatever school my son attends the best school for him by being supportive and involve parents and by embracing the staff at that school and the staff at the district level, instead of being an elitist and saying such and such school's not good enough for us. In closing, we feel, I feel great appreciation for the administration and the staff of Joplin School District. We give you our most precious gift every day to teach and help him become a productive adult. We are hopeful that the board will maintain the school anti-bullying policy tonight and not be bullied by a small percentage of the parents in the district. I want to end with my favorite quote by Gail Sheen, "If you don't change, you don't grow. If you don't grow, you're not truly living." Thank you.
Thank you, Melinda. Mary Thompson.
Thomas.
Thomas?
There's no K.
Okay.
Happy to be here, sorry. My children are gracious and critical people, not I.
I apologize.
I'm going to read a letter that hopefully everybody has and I'm happy. I'm from Royal Heights, I have a kindergartner and a fourth grader. I serve on the PTO, but I come not as a PTO member because I don't feel the PTO necessarily needs to be involved in it because it's gotten a little political. I wrote a letter after request from parents, "Hey, we'd like to say something, but we don't know what to say." We took the letter, we talked to parents one-on-one. We did not have a group meeting, we did not necessarily go solicit, just acquaintances. We didn't want to approach people we didn't know because it has gotten touchy, so we didn't want to upset anybody and cause a riddle. We collected 42 signatures representing more than 60 children in Royal Heights. We're a small school. That's roughly 25% of our school's population and we did this in seven or eight days' time. I think if we'd had time to actually go talk to everybody, that sample size would give you an indication of where Royal Heights stands. Again, I just speak for the signatures on the letter they should have. Dear members of the board, we are proud parents of students currently attending Royal Heights Elementary School. Our students are directly affected by the proposed redistricting before the Joplin R8 School Board. We would like to take this opportunity to express our full support of the redistricting plan. We understand the challenges facing the board members with regards to balancing the needs of students, desires of parents, and needs for the Joplin R8 School District as a whole. While you are debating, discussing, and ultimately voting on these proposed changes, know that you do have support from the same community that elected to entrust to you these decisions that will shape the present and future of our children. Understand that not every decision will always best fit every time, every single child, parent, and situation, that at times, you will question your process. Know that if those difficult decisions are made with the majority at heart, they will be the correct decisions. The majority entrusted into your hands, these decisions. As parents, we tend to be narrowed in our scope of focus. We chose you to make the decisions facing our schools because you have proven to possess the skills and courage needed to have a much broader focus, one that includes not just a few, but all students in your care. We applaud your passion, lead our schools, faculty, and students into a successful and bright future. We stand by the currently proposed redistricting plans and ask that you do as you felt was right when you worked so diligently to draft these plans and vote to move our schools forward with a more balanced and sensible future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Mike Landers.
Mike Landers. Good evening. I'm going to touch base with the grandfather in the permitting, which really hasn't been talked about a whole lot. I do want, before I get into that, I do want to say though, as I sent all you an email before all the board members, I do agree that the board should be looking at more than one plan and I do support a second plan as an option to be voted on. In regards to the grandfather in permitting, whichever plan is chosen, if a plan is chosen, I believe that this topic hasn't been brought up and needs to be addressed. In the current plan, kindergarten through fourth grade kids can continue going to their elementary school. Incoming kindergartners can go to that school if they have a sibling who's in kindergarten through the fifth grade, at fifth grade. So even if they have a sibling leaving the school, they're still allowed to go on it. And this was as of the website today, which I think some of it has been changed. Middle school is a critical time for the kids. These fifth graders are facing a lot of uncertainty, which adds to the stress of going to a brand-new school. I have a fifth grader who is affected for it, by it, and my child does care what school he wants to go to. I also have an eighth grade daughter who is cheerleading at eighth grade at South Middle School. My son has gone to football games, basketball games, the History Day, Science Fair, he knows a lot of the teachers there, he knows the coaches. Hopefully, he doesn't know Dr. Gilbreth yet, but I feel that he has already been set up to go to South Middle School. This is what's been entrained in him for the past couple of years, just like it is for the kindergartners or the kids who are about to enter kindergarten in the future. I would support a plan that would allow for fifth graders who have an eighth grader at the current middle school to also go to that middle school. Currently, right now, the atomic website is only sixth graders and seventh graders, excuse me, a fifth grader that has a sibling and sixth grader, seventh grader is allowed to do that. I think that should be expanded to eighth graders. One thing in regards to that, the South, the attendance at South would still go down by 11 kids because the outgoing eighth grade class is 207 kids, the incoming fifth grade class, as currently scheduled with the feeder schools, is 196. North would go up 16 kids, very similar to the plan that the district has put in place that wants to expand North Middle School. East would stay about the same, I think it would go up six kids. I also have been tutoring for the past three years and I actually had a chance, today was my tutoring day, and I tutored a child over at McKinley. was my tutoring day, and I tutored a child over at McKinley. I've been doing it for three years. I was talking to his teacher a little bit about, because I'm a little late, and I was on the phone with one administration about the plan today, and I just told her why I was late. And Tommy heard me talking about it, and so we talked about it for a few minutes. Tommy's had kids, had brothers that have gone to East Middle School, and he heard that he was going to have to go to North Middle School. And it wasn't that he had anything wrong with it. I said, "What concerns you about that?" He said, "Well, my brothers have all gone to East Middle School, and I want to continue to go there also." Tommy's in fifth grade. In summary, I just believe that all fifth graders currently in there that are being severely affected should be allowed to continue to go to the feeder school that they're currently in because it's not going to affect the attendance numbers that much. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mike. Mike Wardlow.
Good evening. Dr. Hudson North. Members of the board, thanks for the opportunity to talk. Two mics in a row, so that's dangerous. I too am going to refer to the Joplin Globe. I don't know if you all read the paper this morning, but their editors do not envy you, board members. That's what they said, right? They say that, "We'll take another run at voting on a redistricting proposal, and changing school boundaries is never easy." Certainly agree with that, and you have a tough job ahead of you. Last month, after hearing opposition, you as a board voted unanimously to table the decision citing the need to get more information from parents. And the Globe also praises those who voiced their opposition. They, and I quote, "We applaud the parents of Cecil Floyd students for their involvement in the process and making their voice heard." I'm here tonight because I want to make sure that you also hear from what I think is the more silent majority, those of us who felt comfortable with the decisions the board has made and didn't feel a need earlier to speak. As parents and taxpayers, we elect you as board members to represent us. Ms. Sharp, you asked earlier tonight, "What are you hearing in the community from your other board members?" I'll tell you what I hear. What I hear is a lot of chatter about what is all the fuss about? Not just from parents in our neighborhood, but throughout the city. They don't understand why there's the animosity around us. No plan is perfect, certainly true, but as you've heard, the committee worked very hard to develop a plan that benefits the common good. The bottom line is we want to do what's best for all of our students. The committee's plan meets the district's top priority. Those who were here at the work session earlier heard that the top goal was to affect as few students as possible. Plan A is affecting 205 students, while the opposition's plan would only, would affect close to 400, 205 versus 400. Mr. Wilcox, and you asked earlier, the question that you're hearing most is, "Why now? What's the importance of doing it now?" I think the discussion that followed, and Ms. Stickland, I think your response hit it right on the head, "Why not now? It's time to move forward." I applaud you for taking a step back and asking for more input, but as time as a board, I feel that you need to move forward. Finally, it's time to put this issue to rest and to move on. Again, those who were here earlier heard that the extended presentation about those students who come from fragile families and need help with their academics, for me, that's what the board really needs to focus on. Again, applaud you for stepping back and listening, but it's time to move on. The Globe ended their editorial today by saying that, "At the same time, the duty of the school board must be, after getting inputs from parents, to make its decision based on what's best for all." No one in public office gets to win a popularity contest. Their reward is in developing long-range plans that work, and thinking in advance for making that work.
Thank you, Mike. Our last request this evening is Lisa Harns. You're not going to now?
No.
You sure?
I'm not nearly as prepared as all these people were, but my main concern was the grandfathering. Initially, you guys had said that if we redistrict, that the kids are in sixth grade or in middle school to be grandfathered in. Well, in the Joplin Globe yesterday, it said that you guys would go separately on that. It feels like, I don't know, that you're changing your mind type thing. And I have a 12-year-old daughter, and she does care where she goes to school at. So I was, was kind of concerned about the grandfathering part.
Thank you, Lisa. Leaving on to our here approval of the consent agenda. Motion's been made by Mr. Flyer, second by Mr. Landis. Any discussion? Please vote.
Yes.
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 And yes. Moving on to the regular agenda. After hearing 11 people speak tonight, we're going to talk about redistricting and the redistricting proposal.
Where do you put the items that we pulled from the discuss?
Close, I said.
No?
Just some of them. We can, we can do that right now if you like.
Let's do it down after the end, number six, if you would. Let's move it down to number six. Yes. Thank you, Annie. Jason Kwanup. We've discussed this during work session. I think you've went over everything, but you want to hit on anything, highlights during this brief, this time?
You know, the main thing I would say is thank you again to the committee. It's an emotional topic. Change is scary, but the committee worked hard. We had priorities. The plan that we are proposing meets those priorities, and we're confident in the plan. So we recommend that the board adopt the plan, and we thank you for your time and your consideration.
Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion that we vote on the redistricting proposal, please.
Motion's been made by Annie.
Which proposal?
Oh, the.
The committee's only proposing Plan A. The other one was just, yeah.
Okay.
Second.
Motion's been made by Annie, second by Jeff. Any discussion on the redistricting proposal?
I had questions, but Jason answered them for me earlier about the grandfathering.
We'll get into that next time, too. Okay.
Do we need to talk about any of the issues that were raised during the public comments piece around trailer elimination? There are a lot of folks who weren't here.
Go ahead.
Here to hear that. Jason, you want to address the trailer elimination component related to Jefferson Elementary School?
Yeah, trailer elimination is really about square footage and adding square footage rather than reducing numbers. And so really, the way to get rid of them is for us to get more building space that's usable within the building. By just reducing student numbers, especially at an elementary level, it doesn't fix the need for the classrooms. There would still be two classes of kindergarten all the way to two classes to fifth grade. So the building space, the room that's still needed for your, every day, your K through five classes is still the same number of classrooms. You would just have fewer students in those, which doesn't solve the trailer problem. We use trailers for pull-out, for space, special education programs. I mean, there's a lot of programs that are offered today that curriculum didn't offer back when our schools were built. So eliminating trailers by reducing numbers generally won't work.
Any other comments or discussion on redistricting? Dawn?
I have something I'd like to say.
Pull your microphone closer. I can't hear you.
So short. I'm working on that. Members of the Joplin Schools Board of Education serve as members at large, and as such, we are not elected to represent one neighborhood, one school, or one demographic. We are elected to make decisions based on what is best for all 7,000 of our district's students. As a democratic organization, we must always strive to ensure that our actions benefit the greater good, not just a handful of students or citizens, no matter how loud their voices. It is our fiduciary responsibility to put the educational needs of all of our collective students above the desires of anyone's school or neighborhood, as this is the only way that we can guarantee that our district provides an optimal education for all of our community's children, not just a select few. I have enjoyed these past few, past several weeks of public discourse regarding the redistricting proposal set forth by the redistricting committee because it has allowed me the opportunity to listen to and observe several different viewpoints regarding education in our community. On the one hand, I witnessed our staff and administrators' dedication to ensuring all students receive equal and optimal educational opportunities. However, a few public statements by parents speaking on behalf of their individual children have resonated deeply with me. First, at the public input meeting at Cecil Floyd on March 12, 2013, one parent issued disparaging remarks concerning the demographics surrounding North Middle School. I believe that from this statement, one can conclude that he is implying that North is located in an undesirable neighborhood. Additionally, at our public hearings, another parent voiced his distress about the committee's usage of free and reduced lunch rates as a priority for determining school boundaries and populations. Based on the knowledge that his children do not participate in the free and reduced lunch program, I concluded that he either dislikes the notion that his demographic is being used to even things out among the middle schools, or that he does not wish his children to attend school with a portion of students who do not participate, who do participate in the free and reduced lunch program for fear that his children may associate with those children. These parent comments struck a personal chord with me. Since I have only resided in Joplin during my adult years, many of you are unfamiliar with my own educational and socioeconomic background. My parents divorced when I was six years old, and my mom raised my brother and me as a single parent. From second grade through 12th grade, I participated in the federal Free and Reduced Lunch Program. We lived in such modest residences as trailer parks, apartment complexes, and even on a sailboat in a marina. At times, my mom also relied on food stamps to put food on our table. You see, I was one of those kids who lived in a less-than-desirable neighborhood and who the rich kids didn't, rich parents didn't want their kids to hang out with. Or heaven forbid, come over to my place for a sleepover. However, when sage people who came in the form of public school teachers looked at me, they didn't see a little girl with unkept hair who wore clothes purchased on sale at Goodwill. Instead, they saw a student who excelled at reading and math and felt most at home in the school's gifted program. They knew that academic success is not always based on socioeconomic status. For their belief in me and for my mom's unwavering support of my academic successes, I still have the newspaper clipping she saved from 1974 when, as a third grader, I won the all-school spelling bee in Key West, Florida. It's true. I will always be grateful. Because of their collective efforts, I graduated at the top of my class and, with the help of scholarships and federal grants, went on to graduate from my state's flagship institution of higher education, the University of Florida. I am where I am today because of public education, and I will always champion the cause of all of our students, no matter what their race, ethnicity, demographics, school, or neighborhood. Our district is strong today because of our leadership's efforts to ensure that all students are treated as equally and fairly as possible, and as a board member, I will work to make certain that this tradition continues. I, for one, will always endeavor to make decisions for the greater good and not for the desires of a select few.
Thank you, Dawn. Please vote.
Yes.
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 No.
Yes.
Yes.
And yes. Moving on to the grandfathering associated with redistricting. Jason?
Yeah. Grandfathering was part of the original proposal, and it was for, on the elementary side, K through, Kalista, would you move the, would you mind go ahead and getting some, the PowerPoint to the grandfathering? Yes. So what we would propose at the elementary level is current K through fourth, fourth grade students could continue to attend the same school they currently attend. Younger siblings of those current students could grandfather to that current schools as well, as long as there's not a gap in attendance within that school family. Non-example would be a fifth grade student who transitions to middle school with a three-year-old sibling at home. That would create a gap in attendance. And so in that case, the three-year-old would attend the redistricted school. On the next slide, the positive example of redistricting is a family with a student in fourth grade, first grade, and then a three-year-old at home would be able to grandfather a three-year-old to the current school as long as there's not a break in the enrollment gap or attendance. So incoming kindergarteners, that students who don't have a sibling within, within elementary would attend the redistricted elementary school. And then the other important thing about redistricting at the elementary level is that there is not transportation provided. So we do advocate for grandfathering at the elementary level. We also, the committee recommends at a minimum that we grandfather for students who currently have sixth and seventh grade siblings within the middle school to be able, for the, A, for those sixth and seventh grade students to finish out the school year at the middle schools they attend with transportation provided for those current sixth and seventh graders, and then fifth graders who have a sibling who's in sixth or seventh grade to be able to grandfather to their sibling's current school as well. So that is with busing provided for two years. And the important thing on the grandfathering is the transportation would be provided for two years for the sixth and seventh graders to, currently there to get out of, finish at that middle school. And so that third year is an important year for any student that would grandfather that sibling. So we do, we would like to see grandfathering for our students and their siblings at the middle school level in these scenarios. An alternate approach, and this is from listening to feedback from parent concerns, and I think you heard Mr. Landers advocate this, we are sympathetic to, to students who have eighth grade siblings who have had a fifth grader going to the school because that student's been in there with their eighth grade sibling this year, and we understand that. So we would also put grandfathering the option up as an eighth, including the eighth grade in that prior grandfathering scenario, and it would affect a few more students.
Motion to approve the K through fourth and the six, seven, eighth?
Second.
Motion's been made for the K through four and the six, seventh, and eighth, right? Motion's been made by Mr. Flyer, second by Mr. Wilcox. Any more discussion?
So under that motion, is this, would this be in that motion?
Yes. Yes. That would be in this motion.
That would incorporate the fifth graders.
Incorporate the fifth graders.
With five, eight.
Yes.
With eighth grade siblings.
Please vote.
Yes.
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 And yes. Moving on to bond issue. Mr. Paul Barr, I'm presuming.
Thank you, President Steele. There is an attached resolution regarding the offering for sale of general obligation building bonds. This, if you recall, is part two of our, what the public passed last April, and we issued the first bonds in a sale last August. Once the bonds have been marketed, interest rates determined, we'll bring back to the board to ask for approval for that effort. The, again, the first issue related to this passage was in April for $35 million. The Bond Council has worked up the attached resolution submitted by Gilmore and Bell, which authorizes for sale the offering. This action here would ask that you approve the offering for sale of general obligation school building bonds.
Motion been made by Annie, second by Jim. Any discussion?
This is the last of the bond.
This is the last of the last. Please vote.
Yes.
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 And yes. Thank you. Moving down to the next action item, naming of selection of East Elementary. Okay. Or. Motion to accept Soaring Heights. Okay, very good. Go.
I'm still undecided.
Motion's, the motion's been made to accept Soaring Heights by Mr. Flyer, second by Mr. Landis. Any discussion? Or undecided?
Sorry, CJ. That's all right.
You're ready. Please vote.
Yes.
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 New Soaring Heights Elementary. I see our mayor is with us tonight out there. Accounts payable, Mr. Barr. I've lost track, sorry.
Yes, thank you, President Steele. There's an attached bill list items for payment of materials, equipment, services, salaries, and benefits in both instructional and support areas. The administration recommends that the board approve payment of bills in the amount of
So move.
Second.
Motion been made by Mr. Flyer, second by Mr. Kimbrough. Please vote.
Yes.
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 Thank you.
We pulled from the consent agenda capital outlay, and there was some discussion on capital outlay, and you've got a- capital outlay, and you've got a sheet in front of you, so any questions on capital outlays? Paul answered Jeff's question already.
My question was at North Middle School. They want to relocate the ice machine that's never been hooked up in the North Middle School concession stand.
They're wanting to relocate?
And put it in the nurse's office. I would recommend that we have one in the concession stand and one in the nurse's office, and to actually run water to the one that's serving as a microwave at North. The water fountain is on the other side of the wall, so there's water there. If that's okay.
Can we bring that back? It's the, getting water to the ice machine in the concession stand at North is something we need to...
We could certainly look into it. I think Jason could probably check with Kent to see about getting that done.
What's that?
Hooking up the concession ice machine to a concession stand at North.
It's already in there. The water's on the other side of the wall. And then I would still like to have the nurses have their ice machine.
Very motion.
What's recommended here is...
Awesome.
So if we could, you know, on this point, accept what we're presenting to the nurses to have the ice machine, and allow Jason to follow up on the other, that'd be my recommendation.
Okay.
Okay.
Other questions? Mr. Flowers, you got yours answered earlier?
Sure. Yep, he did. Any other questions on capital outlay?
We did have a meeting with the board finance committee and discussed the action item prior to tonight's meeting.
Thank you.
I just want to clarify, that was a motion to retain the ice maker in the commons area. Get it working. You can leave the microwave on. And then also add a ice machine...
To the nurses.
To the nurse's office.
The proposal, the capital outlay plan, was for nurses, for the ice machine being moved to the nurse's office, correct? Okay, so, gotcha.
Who is the timeout room for, Royal Heights?
Hold on.
Ms. Flackney?
That's right.
Keep it one, just purchase one to put in the nurse's office.
Right.
It'd be less moving.
Well, I'm sure the nurse is not going to use as much ice as the concession stand, so you're not going to want to...
You, Jordan.
Yeah.
Okay.
So do we need a motion to purchase an ice machine?
We just, we already made it.
Motion been made by Jeff. It's under the capital outlay. Okay.
You can make that decision.
Okay.
I'm leaning forward.
We got the motion...
You got a second?
No.
I have a second.
Oh. Motion been made by Jeff and second by Annie. Any discussion? Please vote.
Yes.
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 Yeah. Sure. Yes. Discussion items. Anybody have any discussion items? Annie, you got anything?
We are starting track season and tennis season.
Oh, it'd be nice when the snow melts, too.
It's awesome, so please go attend.
At an amazing science fair, I just would add, I was out there today to see the wonderful things that were, our kids had displayed, and other area schools as well.
Cool.
I would invite people out to Cecil Floyd to see the art feeds.
That's right.
Down the...
That's right.
That would be, that's awesome. So thank you, art feeds.
I just want to say thanks to Coach Williams and his staff for putting on the fifth and sixth grade basketball camp. That's going really well. They've done a great job.
Cool. What does that mean, Jeff? I'm sorry. Where was that?
Well, it's been, some of them have been over Memorial, 910 Center, and some of them have been at South.
Anything else? Need a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
Motion been made by Jeff, second by Jim. Please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. We will join to the other room.